That seemed to be, I'll be toiling on. I'll be myself and no one else. I'll keep struggling on. Oh yeah.
Check, check.
A man must go through tribulation, no matter where he's from. If he's a man with understanding, you then know that time alone will tell.
It's all about the chit chat radio show.
Not understanding and why they stumble. They're going to their way for you.
And of course today, you know, we're gonna be vibing with our one and only brother. Brother by the name of Mr. Lawman Lynch. And of course, you know, today's gonna be a very, very important day because you know why? Coming up soon is gonna be a primary election, right? And of course, you listen to the brother by the name of Mr. D Brown, rest in peace Dennis Brown. All right, the chit chat radio show wanna take a moment to say good morning to you. Mister Lawman Lynch, how you doing Lawman?
Good morning, good morning, I'm doing amazing, I'm even much better now that I'm talking to you. How are you?
I'm just amazing, just happy to have you here today and happy to see that our brother is doing what you are proposed to do. And we are expecting some great things from you.
Thank you.
And we wanna tell people before we do anything else to let you know that the primary, when is your primary election?
June twenty fourth.
June twenty fourth and where are you gonna be representing?
District forty one in Brooklyn, the great borough of Brooklyn. And district forty one encompasses East Bed-Stuy, Ocean Hill, Brownsville, Crown Heights, East Flatbush and Remsen Village, it's a very large district.
All right, so before we even get started, just in case you are not as familiar with Mister Lynch as I may be and as many of you may be, but I hope that by now and and June, you will all be familiar with Mister Lawman Lynch. And I think that Lawman got the name, you know, because you know, sometimes your your parents give you a name. And you the name kinda put you where you're supposed to be, you know, Lawman.
True.
At first I thought it was like not your regular name, you know, Lawman, you're supposed to be a lawman.
You know, it's uh my mom got my name in a dream.
Oh yeah, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
My mom got my name in her dream.
So you see, now you're fulfilling your dream because it's true. When I saw it at first, I thought it was because you had plans to run for office and so you're using the Lawman.
That's my name.
Yeah, man, that's she was a visionary.
Visionary and it's an it's a very interesting story.
Yeah.
Um she was pregnant with me.
Mm hmm.
And in her ninth month, like about two weeks before she actually gave birth.
Right.
And she went to bed one night and in her dream, she dreamt of herself standing at the gate of the home we were living in.
Wow.
In Jamaica and an elderly woman was passing by, noticed her.
Yeah.
She doesn't know the woman from anywhere.
Wow.
Elderly woman and she's like, oh, you're you're pregnant and she's like, yeah, you know, and the lady asked her how long, how far along she is.
Right.
She told lady and she asked, you know, the lady, she asked the lady, is a boy or a girl? Say, you know, it's gonna be a boy, all of that, oh, you should give him the name Leon.
Oh Leon.
And my mom said Leon, okay, L E O N. And the lady corrected her and told her, no, not L E O N, it should be L A Y O N.
Oh Leon.
Jumped up out of her sleep.
Wow.
And she wrote it down.
Wow.
And then about a week before I was actually born, she went back to bed and she had a similar dream, the same lady.
Mm hmm.
Came back to her and told her, you know what? Give him the name Lawman as well. So my mom is like, okay, Leon Lawman Lynch.
Oh my goodness, so it's like it's like it's like your destiny was predetermined.
Predetermined and the lady, the old lady, the elderly woman corrected her and said, nah, have Lawman be the first name and Leon be the middle name and she got up out of her bed and she wrote it down.
Wow, amazing. Amazing, amazing, that's 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 good. So people, once again, I want you to get a little bit more familiar with Mister Lynch. So I'll just give you a little insight into him as a person, alright? So you know, Lawman Lynch is a New York City Council candidate for District forty one in Brooklyn. He was recognized by the New York City Public Advocate as a trailblazer in community development. Lawman Lynch has been actively involved in youth and community development since the age of seven. He is recognized People's Advocate, Educator, Development and Communication Strategist, as well as an entrepreneur. And in twenty twenty four, you all know that Lawman um announced his candidacy for the New York City Council Member with the intent to represent constituents of District forty one in Brooklyn, New York. He served as Center and Programs Director at the Salvation Army in Brooklyn, New York and is currently an Elementary and Middle Schools Program Manager at New York Edge, New York City's largest community schools and after school program provider, where he oversees educational and enrichment services delivery in multiple New York City Charter and public schools. You see, I'm going on you know, because I want them to get familiar with it just so just be with me people because I want you to. When we see people come and say they're gonna advocate for students, we have to let you know who we are talking to, who you're dealing with and give you a reason why you need to vote for this person. So I'm gonna tell you, so Mister Lynch is also an author, he's a musician, he's an award winning youth and community development activist. He is a recipient of the New York Caribbean Life Newspaper, Twenty Under Forty Trailblazers and the founder of the Lawman Lynch Foundation, right? A New York based nonprofit organization that focuses on child, youth and community development, supporting programs both in the United States and the Caribbean. Additionally, Mister Lynch is the CEO at, what is this, Gary Glow Diaspora? Gary Glow Diaspora, where um is a multifaceted human services and fintech company. Lawman, I forgot to tell you about that later because I have to go break it down for you a little bit, you're right? So Lawman Lynch also served two terms as Chairman of the African Caribbean and Pacific States Civil Society Forum Brussels and previously served as a member of the education sector in Jamaica Diaspora Northeast USA Think Tank. Mister Lynch considers himself to be a lifelong learner whose purpose is to facilitate the upward mobility of those he comes into contact with. He holds a BA in Communications, Masters in Educational Leadership and is currently a PhD candidate focusing on ethical leadership in education, the private and public sectors. You know, get better than that. Don't you?
Our best days are still ahead.
Best days.
Our best days are still.
Tell them, our best days are still ahead. And as I talked to you today, I want to let you know that I really want you guys to go out. Primary election is going to be on June twenty fourth. And we want you to go out and vote, vote, vote for Mister Lynch. He's a candidate, District forty one. Tell us again where District forty one is.
District forty one, East Bed-Stuy, Ocean Hill, Brownsville, Crown Heights, East Flatbush and Remson Village.
Alright, and that's all about Brooklyn.
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn people, alright, and you know, I'm gonna ask Mister 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 Lynch one thing. If I should look in your playlist today, I want to know, just so we can get a feel of who you are as a person. If I look in your playlist today, I want you to tell me which artist I think I would find in there.
Well, you know, I'm eclectic.
Yeah?
Yes, I love all sorts of music, um reggae, world music, gospel music. So if we if we go gospel, you'll you'll find like a Sinash.
Ah, hold on, hold on, hold on, alright, you'll find a Sinash, hold on, hold on.
Find Sinash, you want me to stop there?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, alright, 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 keep on going.
You'll find Sinash and if you know, if if I'm more into my culture, if I feel very cultural, um I love Agent Sosco. Um there is also Massacre.
Massacre.
Yeah, um but I love, I love all kinds of music.
All kinds of music.
And and Loki and Rihanna's husband.
Okay, alright, that's what we're talking about. Alright, so the people, so alright, so you know, you know, it's Sunday and you know, we the chit chat radio show. Yeah, so there's a chit chat radio show right here at J A Radio Studio. And you know, J A Radio is a community based radio station, is a black owned business. And we do ask you to support our black owned businesses. Also wanna say, don't forget about Mister Lynch, big thing coming up on on um June twenty, I forget the feedback. June twenty fourth, alright, make sure you guys vote, alright? June twenty fourth and he says that his um, close the door. He says that his um artist, a gospel artist is Sinash.
Yeah.
So let's start with Sinash. All over the world, lift up your voice. So you know who you are, shouting love, declaring. Billy Bevans, come on, let's go.
We are a chosen generation, we've been called for to show these excellence. All I require for life, God has given me and I know who I am. We are a chosen generation, we've been called for to show these excellence. All I require for life, God has given me and I know who I am.
I know who I am.
Says I am, what he says I am, where he says I'm at. I know who I am, I know who God says I am, what he says I am, where he says I'm at. I know who I am.
And that's what Mister Lawman Lynch is telling you today, he knows who he is. And that's why on June twenty fourth, all roads lead to where?
Brooklyn, District forty one.
That is our representative and I'm telling you, we now take no fancy, everybody go and vote. We're asking all everyone in Brooklyn, go out and vote, District forty one, District forty one. Don't get used to this name, it'll let it be a household name, Mister Lawman Lynch, alright? And Lawman is telling us that um for gospel, he really likes Sinash, but there's a song from Sinash that I really like and it's called Waymaker and we believe that our God is a waymaker and we are sending you to. Where we go, City Hall, alright? Um so our representative for City Hall right here, Mister Lawman Lynch. Talking about the waymaker Jesus. You are here, moving in a mist. I worship you, I worship you. Once I welcome Kay. You are here, working in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, moving in a mist. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, working in this place. I worship you, I worship. And of course, we do believe that our waymaker Jesus is gonna work miracles and our brother Mister Lawman Lynch will be the representative for District forty one in Brooklyn, right?
Amen.
We are gonna speak that into existence, cause guess what we believe in the power of prayer.
Can you say amen?
Amen, can I hear amen, alright? Cause our God is awesome. Alright, so now let's get to the meat of things because we really want people to get to know, you can okay, you can have a seat, you know? Yeah, man, you can have a seat, you know, yes, man, have a seat. Because, cause you see, right here, we're about we're about family and and we're about as much support as we can get for this brother right here because he's bringing great things. So give him a mic and things, so we're gonna do it. So we want to talk about some background on Mister Lynch right now, right? So Councilman Candidate Lynch, right, that's what I'm calling right now, Councilman, I'm speaking that in existence.
From your lips to God's.
From what, exactly, so Councilman Candidate Lynch, what motivated you to run for City Council for Brooklyn forty one?
Well, you know, I believe that our district deserves the best representation um possible. But even before I speak about the district, for me personally.
Mm hmm.
I believe that I live a life of service.
Right.
Ever since I was a child, I believe that I've been called to do what I'm mandated to do here on earth and that is to impact the lives of individuals positively. Whether it's a young child or an elderly or anyone in between. So really, I have a passion for child, youth and community development.
Right.
And politics is just one vehicle, right? I've been doing youth development and community development work for the better part of thirty years.
Wow.
For the better part of thirty years.
So you've committed, you're committed to it.
Something that I'm really and truly committed to, right? But if we go, you know, to the politics of it, you know, and we peruse um District forty one, I believe that to a large extent, it is one of those forgotten districts in the city, right? And it is forgotten, yet District forty one is central Brooklyn.
Right, right, right.
It's the nucleus of Brooklyn.
What what um what area is central is um District forty one?
East Bed-Stuy, Ocean Hill, Brownsville, Crown Heights, Utica, that is central Brooklyn.
Yeah.
That's central Brooklyn, so we have to get central Brooklyn right in order for that to multiply.
Right, right.
And I believe that the residents of central Brooklyn deserves the best representation.
That's what we're talking about. Alright, so so what, so so based on what you're telling me, you've been so committed to what you've been doing over the years. So you think that you are uniquely qualified for this job?
Uniquely qualified and you know, individuals will say, but hey, you're a neophyte, you know, this is the first you know, your first stint in politics, who are you going to navigate that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are you going, you know, you're young, you're naive, but the reality is because we've been working in the community for so long, we are precautious. We are precautious neophyte and I say we because this is not a Lawman Lynch campaign.
Right.
This is a people centered campaign, right? This is a grassroots.
Hence, hence you've been here with me, it's a grassroots thing.
This is a grassroots campaign.
And I've been and I've been following your journey and I see you are a grassroots kinda person and seeing you on other little platforms and everything and I say, Lawman is everywhere.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, he's everywhere and this is how you're gonna represent your constituents, right? So once I say hi to Kay, Kay, you wanna give like a shout out and thing else first, so?
Me?
Yes, man.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will. Hi guys, welcome to Chit Chat with Sheri.
Yeah.
Thank you for having our newest member of politics.
Yes.
Lawman Lynch, um I want to say, oh, Kay Flash is here, guys, I didn't disappear.
Welcome Kay Flash.
Welcome back to my home, J A Radio as usual. Um Lawman has this, he will win this, I have faith and I'm going to pound the pavement for him and be a foot soldier. Just like he's always a foot soldier for me.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um Lawman has been riding with me since I would say maybe two thousand, what, seventeen, eighteen, around that time. We've been doing radio together and he's been having my back since day one, so. And we hasn't stopped, we'll be back soon, but right now, it's his time, right now, we have to, you know, back him.
Yes.
And he's actually covering an area where I was um raised, where I started here, yeah. My family, when they came from Jamaica, that was the first area in Crown Heights. So I was there, I'm not, I don't wanna, you know, indulge in too much information because then you'll know my age. But I would say, yes, I was there for the Crown Heights riot.
Oh.
Mm hmm, I was, yeah. Forget, I don't look my age, that was nineteen ninety two.
Okay, okay.
And at the time, um David Dinkins was the mayor and I was, I went to school with the little boy who was hit by the um Jewish driver. And you know, he was lived right behind me, so I was outside at the time playing and when the noise hit, I went around the corner and saw everything firsthand, so that's what, you know, ensued the riot, so I was there for that.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's the area that's very sensitive to my heart and, you know, raised. And I know you're going to take great care of it.
Ah, so so we, so we, thank you so much, Kay. So we want to ask everybody in that area to make sure you start do all the door knockings. Go, we're gonna hit the pavements, you knock on the doors, knock on the doors, put the flyers out in every in every corner store. Cause we, oh, we have a caller.
Already?
Caller, you're live.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm to ask Councilmember Lynch a question.
Sure.
So in this, with this new change in administration, what do you think will need to be done for your district? In terms of disseminating information, in terms of giving, teaching folks their rights? How do you think or what are your plans for helping your district with this new administration coming in? With so many people being nervous and afraid, what are, I would love to know what your ideas are.
Right, you know, we are living in uncertain times.
Yes.
Um there's a lot of unease, um not only in the district, but across New York, across the United States of America. And I know that you asked specifically uh about, you know, how the administration, the 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 new president, the new administration will affect the district. But I want to also take this opportunity um to remind individuals that all politics happens to be local.
Right.
Right, and it is very important because of that dynamics that individuals really and truly get involved with local politics. Their city council representative because it really starts there. Uh District forty one is a very diverse district and within that district, there are a lot of immigrants. And we have already started to sensitize our people. Yesterday, for example, we had an immigration fair um in the district where we're bringing individuals out and ensuring that they have the information that's necessary just in case ICE shows up at their homes.
Right.
In case ICE shows up at their schools or at their churches. Because the reality is um churches are no longer sanctuaries.
No.
You know that, right?
Right.
Churches are no longer sanctuaries, schools are no longer sanctuaries, hospitals are no longer sanctuaries. So we have to en- ensure that the our residents, our constituents have the information so that um they do not get in trouble. And at the same time, they do not put themselves in a particular situation where they get deported. So we've been doing that um since over over the past week, as a matter of fact, ensuring that they are sensitized. Come March one, we'll be hosting a community fair in Brownsville.
Right.
And we'll be bringing out individuals from the legal sector to provide information to our constituents. We'll be bringing out individuals from the health sector.
Right.
Provide the necessary health screening and um tests that they need. But I think the main issue for many within District forty one is around immigration matters.
Right.
And for me, what would work now, I want to have no other conversation except that which deals with an immigration amnesty.
Mm hmm.
I think that's important.
Right.
I think that is something that the um our elected officials, those who are already in their respective seats.
Right.
Should really push for, opposed to pushing for um, you know, only sensitization or arguing the whole issue of deportation. I think we should really go to the table with an argument, a very solid argument for an immigration amnesty.
I hear you, caller, caller, was the question answered?
It was answered ten times over. I love the idea, I often think that poor people, one of the biggest things that affects our communities is just access to knowledge. How do we keep up with the fairs that you guys are holding? How do we know when and where it's happening?
Okay, so uh you can log on to my website, lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com. That's lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com. Or you can follow me on social media, Instagram, TikTok, lawmanlynchny. That is lawmanlynchny and I post at least twice per week. Um and you know, you'll be updated with all the information there.
Alright, thank you so much, thank you caller, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks again, alright. Alright, so there you have it, so thank you so much, that was a good one, right? So we're getting an insight as to what you'll be doing as a representative for District forty one. Um but one of the things that I realized about, I was looking at, she asked most of my questions every, so I asked about that. But I know that one of the things you like to push is um education and youth development. So you mentioned um a strong belief in the importance of education. What specific initiatives would you push for to improve public school in your district?
So that's a very um dynamic topic. Education itself is dynamic. At first base, based on the nature of the district, um the demographics of the district, um the education, how we deliver education has to be culturally responsive.
That's true.
That's the first thing because young people, our children, learn differently.
Differently, no, they can't see the phone, you know?
They they learn differently. So one other thing, what my major project, a major project of mine, actually I have two.
Mm hmm.
Right? But my major project, one of the two, is a wrap wraparound educational model where there's a seamless transition from day school to after school.
After school, mm hmm.
And this is really a human needs services issue, a social development issue, right? That helps both the child and the family. So after school is very important. But it has to be seamless, so in the morning, our young people, our children, we are focusing so much on the cognitive development of our young people. They have to learn the math, they have to learn the English and you know, that's what, that's what's gonna make mommy and daddy proud because they can actually read and write and do arithmetic. But the affective domain is so important. And I really want the after school component to take care of that, the enrichment services, the STEM, the dance, the music.
Right, right, right.
The mind, the steel pan, the clubs.
Yeah.
All of these things are extremely important and I do not want my children in District forty one to be shortchanged in any way, shape or form.
Ah.
So that is where our money is going to be done, that is where our city council resources will go to ensure that our after school programs are reinforced financially because it takes care to care, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to first care, but the reality is that it also takes cash to care.
Absolutely.
Right, so that's a lot where some of the resources are going to be. And that's our partnership with the public school system.
Yes, yes.
Then what is it that our campaign is going to do? Independent of the public school system, yes, we may have partnerships with the public school systems, but we want to also have partnerships with NGOs, other um nonprofits in the in the community.
Right.
You know, the churches and other CBOs. And we want to promote five academies.
Mm hmm.
So we have divided the district in regions.
Right.
So in each region, we'll have different initiatives going on. So one initiative would be centered around sports, the other would be centered around the creative arts. Basically, we're taking over the orange economy.
Ah.
Right? And every Saturday, our young people will be able to go to these district city council academies in partnership with our CBOs and our schools. And they are going to be learning dance, ballet.
And that's good.
Hip hop.
Yes.
Music, the choir, you know, we're really going to take District forty one to another level.
A different level.
Yeah, yeah.
Higher level.
And of course, sports.
Yes, 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 yes. Alright, so you talk about STEM, so and this is how you're gonna expand expand that um STEM thing.
STEM program and with STEM, we're talking about hydroponics.
Yeah.
You know, eat what you grow, grow what you eat. This is the concrete jungle, you know? However, we can ensure that we optimize what we already have, the spaces we have.
Right, right.
So bring hydroponics to as many schools as possible, um bring hydroponics to um some of our community centers so that within those centers, within those schools, we can grow a little pop chow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mint.
Some color low, some to catch the body different for.
You know, and it's it's innovative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can get our young people and our our families.
So so in essence, so you know, like back in Jamaica, they had um the whole forage club thing, so something similar. So you do a little backyard gardening and everything and so on, so. You know, um you know, homey can earn to sew and crochet and.
Right, right.
Going back to going back to basics and that's important, back to basics.
Yeah.
Alright, so people, um if you want to donate to um this campaign, how can they donate to you? Cause you know, it takes money to care.
It takes money to care and you know, we are part of what is called the matching funds program with the campaign finance um board.
Yes.
So once you go on our website, lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com, you'll see the big donate button. Once you click donate, it reroutes you to the campaign finance board contribute portal.
Ah.
And then you can choose um.
How much you wanna give?
You want to give, you can give five dollars, you can give a dollar.
What's the amount, what's the Lisa, what's the most I can give?
You can give up to a per person, a thousand and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Right? Because, you know, we monitor it so that individuals, you know.
Yes.
Are all, we're all on the, at, at, at a level playing field. So these politicians, we cannot be bought by big businesses, basically. So we don't, we don't want a business donating, giving us a check for five thousand or ten thousand, expecting something in return.
Be, be holding to them.
So, and I want my campaign to really be a grassroots campaign. Any amount you can donate, donate. We do have um a target for now until the end of April.
Right.
To raise thirty thousand dollars.
Right, and it's doable.
It's doable. Come on, we can do this. We can do this.
So, so we're going to utilize all the various um social media platforms to make sure that this is done. So don't forget that um the primary election is gonna be on June twenty fourth. Very, just around the corner.
Right.
And you know, we have to really truly hit the ground running right now and asking everybody, everyone who's here on my Facebook Live, wherever in the world you are today, we're asking the guys to make a donation, make a donation. If you believe in the causes that um Mr. Lynch wanted to push in District forty one, we want you to help out the best way you can, alright? And I love everything I do wanna do. I was gonna ask you before, you know, how you plan to um, how you plan to work with other communities, but I don't have to kind of answer all of that. Everything comes, falls under that um whole umbrella.
Right.
Of what you're gonna be doing with the after school program and so on, so that's good. So how do you plan to collaborate then with other local schools?
Well, you know, uh, we are building, you know, we talk about, we live in this neighborhood and that neighborhood. I kinda want us to change the narrative, change our language. Because words are powerful.
Absolutely.
Right? There's power in the tongue. So when we think of a neighborhood, essentially, we're thinking about building structures.
Mm-hmm.
But I want us to think of our environment as a community. I help you.
You help me.
You help me.
Yeah, it takes a village.
It takes a village. We have to go back to that ideology.
Absolutely.
So we are running a campaign that is steep, built on partnerships. Built on collaboration, built on community.
Public, private, partnership.
Thank you. We're, we're looking at the tripartite, a tripartite approach to development. Public sector, private sector, you and me.
Yes, every yes. Yes, yes.
Everybody coming together so that we can achieve our goals. So people will be at the center. That's my tagline, you know?
Right.
People at the center of everything that we do.
So you have the people in the center and everything else revolves around it.
Everything revolves around.
Then center, so yeah, like you have the little pie chart now, but the right in the middle you have people, everything is around it.
Everything, and people is an acronym.
Mm-hmm.
P E O P L E. The first P stands for public safety.
Mm-hmm.
The first E stands for education. The O stands for optimization.
Mm-hmm.
The second P stands for public health. The L stands for love. And the final E stands for entrepreneurship.
That's what we're talking about.
Right? So people at the center of everything that we do.
Yes, yes. So once again, people, if you're just joining us, if you're just talking to, if you're just joining us, we're talking to, um, we're, we're, we're speaking this into existence, and so we're saying, we're talking to councilman.
Yes.
I should, I should, I don't wanna say councilman candidate Lynch, I wanna say we're speaking to our councilman Lynch, right Kay?
Which is right.
Which is right.
From your lips to God's ears, I tell you, from your lips to God's ears.
From my lips to God's ears, and from Kay's lips to God's ears, and from your lips to God's ears. Cause you see, like I said, people, it's a grassroots thing we're doing right now, and nothing beats grassroots. And you know, one of the things I find here is that um he's a very down-to-earth brother. He's a lawman anywhere, you can go talk to him, he's very approachable, he's very accessible, and that's what you want in a community, in a district. Cause you know, sometimes when you run in for these offices and once you win, they don't see you again.
Right.
That won't happen here.
Nah, we're already doing the work.
You also want someone that actually really cares.
Yes.
Because sometimes they portray it, it's a facade, but he genuinely cares.
Fashion, he has a passion.
You, 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 you're swilling my head, you're trying to.
I'm just being honest, I'm not really that nice to you, I'm just being honest.
So, 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 alright, then, so that's the case, so, so what inspired that passion for public service?
You know, I think.
You have, you have only always worked in public sector?
I had, I had one stint in the private sector.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was a, a financial com- entity.
Yeah.
By the way, and the, I couldn't, I couldn't close a deal. It was a, it was a small loan, loans, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I couldn't close a deal, and the reason I couldn't close. Oopsie doops.
Alright, so then.
The reason I couldn't close that deal is because I just couldn't. I just couldn't see where I would be comfortable having individuals sign on to such high um interest. And I mean, I could, I couldn't do it, I couldn't do it. And my boss called me the other day, she's like.
It's not gonna work.
This is not gonna work, it's because of your heart.
You realize, you realize that the high interest rating wouldn't work for people.
But you know, outside of always working in the nonprofit sector or with government, um, my church is, drumroll, the Salvation Army.
Ah.
You know, and uh if you know anything about the Salvation Army, um, some people come, come to help us, you know? Uh, so it is, it is innate, you know, it is something that has been with me ever since I was a child. I grew up in the Salvation Army, I learned to play music in the Salvation Army. Um, Salvation Army is really my second home.
Passion.
Second, yeah, my, my second social home, yeah.
Alright, so I'm gonna wind down, cause we're talking about the whole educational part of it. So I have um another question for you. I was gonna ask you about initiatives, but you've already spoken about that, to improve like um school facilities in the district, but we've kinda covered that. But um, so what role do you think um technology, technology should play in education? Um, how can it be more effectively integrated into the Brooklyn Public Schools?
Every step of the way, we can't fight it.
Mm-hmm.
We really can't fight it. No, this is uh, this is an issue that requires understanding.
Mm-hmm.
It requires dialogue with different stakeholders in the education system. And by the stakeholders, I don't only mean individuals who are educational administrators. I don't mean the DOE, I'm also talking about families.
Right.
Right? So we want a society whereby which our young people are socially cognitive. So they know how to interact with each other, they do, they know how to have a conversation. They don't always have to have a device in front of them, they should have various social graces.
Yes, absolutely.
So we have to continue to invest in that. But we also have to be mindful of the fact that technology is with us and it's going absolutely nowhere.
That's true.
So even as we look at the phone, it's a very touchy situation, do we allow them to use?
I was just about to ask you if you would support the phones being taken away from students in school, cause it's a big thing now, we know.
Yes, yeah.
I think there's a time and place for everything, and while individuals are doing their academics, they should know when to put their phone aside.
Absolutely.
But then there are other subject areas or other initiatives, even in after school, whereby, because I work in the after school space. And we try to encourage our specialists to see how best they can integrate technology in their various lessons.
Yeah, but.
So even if we look at STEM, Sherry, uh, all the robots that we use.
Right.
To have these young people build from scratch, is, use their phones to operate the robots.
Right, right, right.
You know, there's cahoots.
Mm-hmm.
Cahoots can be an education, it's very educational, you use your phone.
Right, right, right.
Charades, there, there's educational charades, you use your phone. So instead of trying to fight it, how best can we do it if we're teaching leadership?
Right.
And we want to, or, or, I mean, any, any, any lesson that we want our children to do, uh, a PSA on any subject matter, they can use their phones to create those videos. There are multiple opportunities whereby which we can embrace technology, opposed to trying to fight technology.
Absolutely. But at the same time, so we have to be mindful, because with this whole AI and everything now, we don't want to also have your s- um, ki- kids finish school and you have a bunch of duns, because what's going on right now, the whole um.
AI.
AI, you know, AI is doing all the schoolwork now, but you know, back in the days, you could always reach out to someone to write the term paper for you. Now you can have AI to write the whole paper.
Chat GPT.
Exactly, you just talk right into it, exactly, you see?
Well, you know, with, with, with Chat GPT and, and other um technology, it also requires at least your basic thought process.
You have, it's what, it's a garbage in, garbage out.
Yes.
So, but if you are smart enough to ask the right, ask the correct question, you get the entire paper done.
Exactly, if you ask the right questions.
Hmm.
Another thing too is that they don't have, they, they don't have the same options we have. You see, we had the option to get up and go into a library and research. Yes, the libraries are still there.
The whole macro.
But they're not doing that.
The whole macrophage.
Jump on Google and everything is there, you know? So it kind of changes everything for them.
We had to go with the encyclo- encyclopedia.
Encyclopedia.
I look for. And you look for the number, A to D, so you know?
See me at Woolworth's library, you know, over there, in the library for hours, trying to get a project done.
I can imagine. I found my encyclopedias recently, they're all stocked up in my closet, about seventy-five of them.
Oh my god.
And I say, you see, and I, no, I said, I can throw these out, cause I can't even say, I'm gonna keep them, but it's not like the kid is gonna look at them, they're not looking at them.
If you want to get rid of them, fine, I'll take them.
I have them, you can have them. They're collecting dust. I don't kinda have any more kids, though.
I can be a Loki geek, you know?
Once again, people, if you're just joining us, we're talking to um councilman. Well, in case you don't know, he's the candidate for the upcoming election on June twenty-fourth, representing the forty-first district of Brooklyn, which um covers um.
East Flatbush, Crown Heights, Ocean Hill, Brownsville, Ramson Village, East Bed-Stuy.
Alright, so if you're hearing us today, we're asking everybody to get involved, because he is our own brother, he's a Jamaican brother as well. Um, yeah, I know, he's a, he's a, he's a, he's a very diverse community you're representing right there. But we want everyone to go out and support, tell your brother, tell your friend, tell your sister, everybody, you must vote. Cause you know, we have a problem when it comes to these local elections, because the turnout is so poor. You'll have the pollsters there all day, nobody coming up to vote. So we're asking the turnout, just turnout, 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 that's what we want to stress.
Yes.
It doesn't make sense if you're gonna support someone, but you still don't show up to vote.
And it is so, it is so important that you, that we go out and support the candidate of your choice.
Absolutely.
Support the candidate.
Whoever you're supporting.
Exercise that franchise. You know how, how people fought, you know how Martin Luther King fought?
For the right.
For us to have the, 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 these kind of rights.
Yeah.
You know, um, Harriet.
Yes.
Rosa Parks, even Marcus Garvey, his influence he had.
Right.
On these civil rights activists.
Yes.
Come on, we can't just leave it, our grandparents, our great grand, we cannot give away.
We can't give away.
Rights on our franchise.
Alright, that's exactly, that's what we're saying now. Hey, watcha know, I'm on the set.
Oh, we winning right now, you be. Say we winning right now, let me get that show, it's the one we living right now.
District forty one.
Cause I'm winning right now, yeah. I'm actually living right now, cause. Oh, we winning right now. I'm Thanksgiving right now, cause, cause we winning right now, yeah. I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I'm waiting. Hey, watcha know, hey, I'm a walking double, learn from the else, put them in a medal in a joke for your fans. Every day you see, every day fan on next film, break records like the Rockstar next film. And every single ounce of effort we expel, it's all about progress, cause we have the excel, I watcha. Looking like so, yes, we dress well, and I done a gun for the ring the next film. I'm about to send my eight, cause I can't to get well, cause I'm sick of it.
Yeah, we winning right now, we winning right now, we're winning right now. Don't forget, you can call Mr. Lynch live in studio here at seven one eight, seven eight five five seven six zero, seven one eight seven eight five five seven six zero. Also, I wanna speak about something that is near and dear to my heart, wanna talk about healthcare. Wanna talk about healthcare, because you know, you have to be a well-rounded brother to represent that district, alright? So of course, you know, healthcare is a, is a critical issue, especially in the underserved communities. So what I want to find out from you is um, what are your top priorities for improving healthcare across, eh, healthcare access in your district? And you say, we're talking about your district, and we know you're gonna have it, you know?
Yeah, man, of course, thank you so much. You know, healthcare access is extremely important, because we serve a lot of vulnerable individuals.
Vulnerable, yes.
Young children and our elderly.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Unfortunately, within the district, we do not have any major hospitals.
Oh, you don't?
So you have Kings County, that's right on the cusp of the district, like two, three blocks out. Then you have, um, oh my gosh, corner of uh Linden.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Brookdale, Brookdale.
Thank you so much. Brookdale, right, you know, is one block out of the district, one block. Uh, so we do not have any major hospitals, but we have a few health centers.
Mm-hmm.
And clinics within the district. We can't take on everything.
That's true.
But one of the critical areas that is sometimes forgotten is mental health issues.
Oh my goodness, that's such a.
So we want to invest in the mental health infrastructure, access to mental health care.
Mm-hmm.
Through our health centers within the district.
Right.
So, and also at the school level. And I keep mentioning the school, because of course I work in the system.
Right.
And a lot of times, we see our children and young people come in and they're like, what's? They're acting out of sorts, and you wonder what the problem is.
Sometimes they have other live things going on.
There are so many other things going on.
Mm-hmm.
And then you invite the parents in, and then you start to have conversation with the parents, and you realize that, you know, the family may be going through something.
Absolutely.
The community has an, has an impact as well. So we want to provide our schools with the relevant resources.
Right.
So that they can address these mental health issues.
Right, right, right.
But outside of the mental health issue, we want to also um promote a healthy lifestyle
Mm-hmm.
Among our constituents. So we'll have monthly free health screenings, health checks.
Right.
At various community centers. One, also, not everyone can afford gym membership.
Right.
But want to do our community gym experience. So we do our community free aerobics, um, you know, different initiatives around that.
How would, how would you, how, how do you propose to um sponsor, um, to pay for that?
So every community.
Mm-hmm.
Has the skill sets that we need. And there are individuals within the community who are experts, uh, you know, trainers.
Right.
And we encourage, I'm encouraging you from now, if you're hearing my voice, ensure that you are a registered entity.
Alright.
Ensure you are a registered entity, because a little ten thousand dollar contract here or there.
Right.
To provide the service is coming down the pipeline.
Absolutely.
Right? And then there are others who are willing to volunteer their, their, their time, you know, and services um for the betterment of the community.
Cause one of the things I find though, um, especially, you know, in the minority communities, is that, um, like for example, you have, um, these students who, I know you have an after school program, but you know, sometimes you have students who, they are going to school, they're doing the work, but sometimes you need additional help, but they can't afford the hunting tunnel, cause those are expensive.
Yes.
So um, do you propose to have anything like a weekend thing to help someone, like for example, students who want to come for a little after, a little extra help?
Right.
Rather than you going and hiring a tutor, which you know, you can't afford, is there anything that you could do to kind of facilitate that?
Yeah, I, I mentioned earlier that, um, in addition to the wraparound educational model,
Mm-hmm.
That from our office, from our district, from our district um council office, we're going to be promoting five academies.
Ah.
Um, and four of the academies, well, three of the academies would be centered around the orange economy.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So we're talking about the arts, the creative arts and all of that. One academy will be sports-centered.
Mm-hmm.
And the next academy has to do with the academics.
Okay, okay.
Right?
And I'm happy, I'm happy to ask you again, because sometimes you have to retake it, so people can remember it. You said it, and see, it kinda slipped me, so just so you know, that it's gonna be a lot of things in place.
Right.
If you put Mr. Lama Lynch in office.
When they do.
When they do, when you do, when you do.
When you do, right, right.
When Mr. Law, when Mr. Lynch is your council representative for District Forty-One, these are the things that he proposes to do for you. So when somebody comes to you with a plan, tell them what they're gonna do.
Right.
So at least work with them, at least give them an opportunity to prove to do what you say you wanna do, don't it? Kind of time people come and say, you might have the sponsors, you have the people with the money, who are you running against, you know?
Yes, the incumbent, yes.
Oh, okay. We have to call him. But so, 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 so.
We're promoting one brand today, one brand.
Not leaving, no they. So, so that, that person remains nameless. But in the meantime, we're saying that the one name you should walk away with today is Lawman.
One name to remember today.
Remember today. Let me say, say it again?
Lawman Lynch.
Just in case they ever hear you.
Lawman Lynch.
Alright, and we're talking about District Forty-One in Brooklyn. Everybody go out and vote, everybody go knock on the door. I want to see the flyers out there. Give me some flyer. No, I go different places and I'll go out and give them out for you too. I, I, I hit the pavements for you and stuff also. And everybody, you know, everybody these days, you have a, a, a social, you have followers on your various platforms. I'm gonna ask you all too, well, I'm gonna share this interview today on my Facebook page, it's gonna be pinned to my page for a while. I'm asking you guys to share this interview because you see, Lawman has enough and he's telling you what he's going to do for the community. And we want to share, I want it to be a household name. I wanted it, because everybody say, oh, we know Lawman. That's what we want to hear. We know Lawman, we know Lawman. So we don't just want you to know Lawman, we want you to go out as well because like I say, it takes cash to care. We're asking you to go to his website. Tell them again, Lawman.
Spell it all out. Lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com.
And one more thing, there's another um vulnerable population, um seniors. How can you help them though? Because like you said, um their issues will be different from what a young person will be suffering with, apart from the mental health and so on. But seniors, um surviving on the little pension and stuff, what can you do to assist seniors?
So for those of you who don't know, I'm a mama's boy.
Ah.
And I'm also a grandmama's boy.
Okay, okay.
I love old people.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I have a very soft spot for senior citizens. And every Sunday when I go to church, you know, um our seniors, the ladies, they always bring my little sweetie. I don't know if you see this.
Ah, yeah, my sweetie.
They still do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I love them. Um, but in the district, heavy is the head that wears the crown.
Absolutely.
And I'm not running an acrimonious campaign. So I wouldn't sit here and speak negatively about the incumbent, the person who is there currently. And one of the things that you hear a lot is that she gives our senior citizens um turkey at Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
And she'll take them on a trip, you know, over now and then. I put it to you, and I'm very, very serious about it.
Mm-hmm.
Our seniors deserve so much more.
Absolutely.
Than that, right? It's good, but they deserve so much more than that. And I mentioned that I'm a mama's boy and I'm a grandmama's boy for a reason.
Right.
When I speak with our seniors, our grandmothers and our grandfathers, they are so concerned about what we have in store for their children and grandchildren.
Right.
It is unbelievable. So everything that I've listed so far that we want to do for District Forty-One.
Yes.
Is what our seniors want for our community. That's what they want. We also have to think about the pantry system.
Yes.
I'm not sure how often you peruse the streets of Brooklyn.
I see the lines.
And you see the lines.
And you know those elderly people can't go in the line sometimes, they're the kids, they're the walkers.
It is heart-wrenching.
Yes.
To see them. What I can tell you is that when I am elected.
Yes.
As the city council representative, if any of these CBOs are accessing city resources to finance or to provide pantry services.
Right.
I do not want my constituents, my elders, on the streets standing in any line in the hot sun or in the cold for hours. It's not happening.
No.
You must invite them in. If it is a church.
Yes.
Find the space for them to be on the inside.
Yes.
You know, so very simple adjustments to the whole operations.
If it's somebody who, somebody who look like they're disabled, you try, you prioritize and you bring them in first.
Bring them in first.
Sit at, yes.
And, and a lot of these establishments, they have gymnasiums, have them come inside. Let me tell you, the operations, there's going to be a new sheriff in town.
Yeah, new sheriff.
Lawman Lynch.
And I'm telling you.
And the way in which we operate is going to be much different.
It will not be business as usual. So don't forget, so um June twenty-fourth is the primary election. We're asking everyone to go out and vote. June twenty-fourth and the representative you're gonna be voting for is Mr. Lawman Lynch, alright? And all what he's telling you right now, trust me, he's going to do it, is a brother who is true to his word. Thank you so much, Lawman, for all of that. So people, we're talking to Lawman Lynch and I can't say it enough. Um, it's gonna be a household name by the time I'm finished today. I'm gonna keep on telling you, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch. Go and support, go and donate something. It can't be too small, as little as five dollars and as much as a thousand dollars and fifty cents and we'll take it too. Alright? And our goal is to raise at least thirty thousand, which we know at April.
End of April.
End of April. So as is doable, we can make more.
Yes, we can.
But we're, we're, we're shooting for thirty. Alright, we're shooting for thirty. Thank you so much, people. But you know, it is Chicha Radio Show. It is the Chicha Radio Show. I know Mr. Lynch loves Massacre. Voice of Romeo and Virgo alongside Massacre, I've been there before. And of course, I'm telling you, June twenty-fourth would not be a normal day. June twenty-fourth is all about a primary election and District Forty-One. We're telling you right now, District Forty-One is all about Mr. Lawman Lynch. When you go in the, in the, in the voting booth is Mr. Lawman Lynch. Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch. Make that resonate with you. Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch. We're speaking that to the citizens. That's who we're voting for, District Forty-One. District Forty-One, Lawman Lynch, on June twenty-fourth. Make sure you go out and vote, knock on the doors, bring your neighbors. If your neighbors still don't drive or they're sick and shut in but they can vote, pick them up, give them a ride. Take them to the voting, um voting booth, you know? Let us vote. Alright, so Mr. Lynch, we're gonna talk about some business development and once of economic growth because you know, it takes cash to care, like you said, don't it? Alright, so in, 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 um, in District Forty-One, you know, business development, I know is something that you're passionate about as well. So another key priority for you. So what specific strategies do you plan to have to help local businesses grow in Brooklyn?
So you know, since the pandemic, the COVID-nineteen pandemic, a lot of our storefronts have not reopened, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
So when you peruse um the business belts in the district, and we have identified the business belts.
Yeah, yeah.
Uton, um Rockaway, Pitkin, Utica.
Yes.
You know, so a lot of storefronts are still closed and they just can't afford it. So in the same way, by the way, on a social front, I'm supporting a rent freeze for those individuals whose rent keeps going up residential.
Right.
But a rent freeze should also be promoted for business owners.
Right.
You know, because business entrepreneurship is really the backbone, the economical backbone of the, of the community.
Yes.
So we will support wholeheartedly a rent freeze for businesses. That's the first thing. Um, we also want to provide business grants.
Right.
For entrepreneurs who want that extra capital, you know, seed capital.
But, but isn't that something like what SBA does?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, how, but the time, the time lapse, you know, through city council, there's so much we can do.
Right.
Um, through discretionary funds, um, once we can account for it, um, it can be done.
Right.
Right? Uh, but even with the SBA, a lot of businesses don't know.
Yeah.
About the service. So what we want to do is to have a business incubator. It's in our manifesto. So this is not something where I'm just talking about off the cuff.
Right.
It's something we have spoken about, we have, we have planned, we have, we're in, we're in constant dialogue with businesses in the district to really promote a business incubator system whereby which entrepreneurs, businesses can come together and provide, I mean, capacity, capacity building and capacity sharing.
Right, right.
So together, they're going to be working to strengthen each other. Um, we're also thinking about an uh, an internship program for budding entrepreneurs.
Right.
A lot of those buildings that you see, there are so many young people living there who are budding entrepreneurs. They have their own T-shirt companies. You know, their own um jewelry-making companies. We want to provide the needed resources, the services, um so, and the resources so that they can be successful in their endeavors.
Alright, so um, so all the small business owners and stuff, when they can, mom and pop shops and they look, and you know, these days they have so many entrepreneurs right now. We have all young people are doing all kind of thing now and just not registering the business the way they should and not maximizing the profits like they should and like they could.
And we have consultants coming in to help individuals with their N W B E application.
Yes.
Because it can be a tedious process.
I know.
People start it and they don't finish it.
Yes.
And we want to encourage our minorities.
To capitalize on it.
To capitalize on this opportunity. Do not give up. It is hard. And because we recognize that they're giving up, because it's a very tedious process, we're bringing in our own um consultants to really help them through the business incubator so that they can get fully registered.
And, and one of the things that I find, because you know, I work for the state, I'm with the MPO, and you find sometimes we have like grants coming down, like for example, like with the um uh for the buses, like the power transitions and so on, you will have like, the federal government may give you like a, a, a eighty-twenty match. You'll find twenty percent, they give you eighty percent of that money. And you know, sometimes they have these workshops and people, all people don't show up. And I see, I see we go out to like Riverhead, Long Island, and you can figure people in Hamptons where you think you don't need it. And they come and they sit in the workshop, the workshop is full. And they go page by page and they learn how to apply for this money. I see they have the same thing over here in Jamaica. Three people showed up, the exact same workshop. So three people show up, right? And this, the federal government is giving you grants, giving you the money and say, okay, this, we're giving you eighty percent and you find twenty percent. You wanna buy a bus, you wanna start a little thing, nobody show up.
Wow, and that's, that's where the business incubator becomes important because once you are a business within the district, we are formalizing the association, right? And we're going to have all of these um resources available to our.
So is it gonna not just be, you know, it'll be like a black business or it's gonna be entire, everybody, everybody?
Once you're in District Forty-One, because I'm not, I don't intend to be a representative only for.
Blacks.
Blacks, you know, not only for Jamaican, I'm Caribbean.
Yes.
Right? And but also we, we have, we're eighty percent, you know, black African-American, but the other twenty percent, you know, very important too. They're our community members, they're our family, they are family.
Mm-hmm. So um job development, so how do you plan to help create job opportunities for like local residents?
So we have a situation where we are programmed to go to school
Mm-hmm.
to learn, to go to college and be employed nine AM to five PM. We want to promote entrepreneurship as much as possible. And not only that, through the creative arts, there are two major initiatives that we want to bring to the district that can potentially mobilize in excess of one million US dollars.
Wow.
Um, within the summer months, right? And we want to ensure that our residents have a piece of that pie as vendors, as service um providers, and also as frontline entertainment specialists.
Right.
And it's in the manifesto.
Nice. Alright, so I'm one of these in the, in the manifestos, okay? You know, for example, like college students, internships. I know you, you, you stressed about internships for somebody, they can't find internship. So is this something that you're, you, you would have like someone in your community helping those college students, you know, find internships? Because sometimes, sometimes they don't even know where you start looking.
Right, so the.
So they end up in McDonald's.
And, and.
And nothing, nothing, and nothing, and nothing's wrong with that. But sometimes they want to get into the.
Their, the, the field of their choice.
Right.
Right? And that is important. So we are promoting a pipeline of excellence.
Right.
Remember that phrase, a pipeline.
Pipeline of excellence, what's that?
So from elementary school, we want you to have a clear under, or families to have a clear understanding as to which middle school they want the child to go to, which high school they want the child to go to, which college they want the child to go, and be a part of that journey with your child. E- either your child wants to do basketball or soccer, whatever it is, be a part of that journey. Because it doesn't have to be academics.
Right, it doesn't.
It can be technical, it can be vocational.
Yeah.
We want our barbers.
Yep.
You know, we want our estheticians.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Electricians, we want all of those, right? So the, a part of the business incubator um system, we have already started conversations with.
Just a minute, please.
Okay.
Call you live.
So the, a part of the business.
Hello?
Yes, you're live.
I have a question.
Sure.
Call you live. Yes.
We're getting the feedback if you can turn down your.
No, you have turned on, turned on your radio.
I have a question.
Sure.
So my question is, how, good, good morning and good afternoon, first of all.
Morning.
You have to turn, you have to turn off your radio.
So my question is, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my question is, how do you plan to enforce these things inside of the schools?
How do I plan to enforce?
How, like the community, the business ideas, and you know, really engage in it in the schools? Because the kids, you know, they grow up with us and they, they understand they are our future. So how do you plan to incorporate these things into the school community?
Okay, so the school is over. We don't want to overburden the school with certain responsibilities. Earlier, I spoke about the wraparound educational model, which is a partnership between day school programs and after-school programs, right? I also spoke about the academies that we're going to be um initiating, the five academies we're initiating in the district. One of the key deliverables of our partnership with day school and after school will be financial literacy, right? Which is going to be extremely important within the school setting. As it relates to the business incubators and the internship programs, I personally wouldn't put that, uh, put the onus on the school per se. Um, because, you know, we're a part of a, a body. There's a, there's a reason for the head, the arms, the legs, the heart, the different, you know, tissues, so on, organs, so on and so forth. So I wouldn't necessarily put that onus on the schools. But what we'll do is work closely with our CBOs, our community centers, our church, our faith-based organizations to really be, and the businesses to build out the business incubators. And through the business incubators, we will disseminate that information throughout the community, through our community centers. So nothing will, is going to be done in private. Nothing is going to be done in silence. We're going to ensure that the residents or community members or stakeholders have all the information. It will be posted on the city council website, it will be posted on my personal website. And we are not shutting down our social media platforms, right? We're always going to be active, we're always going to be engaged in the community. I know exactly what our current, what, what our residents are going through currently. And we want to change that. Change is on the way and we want individuals to embrace the change because we're going to be disseminating information, we're going to be as open and transparent as possible. So the information will be there for you to access.
All right, well, I appreciate that. I wanna say you're doing an amazing job and you have my vote.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So you're in Brooklyn, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much.
And make sure you tell your friends and families to vote as well, all right?
Absolutely.
All right, June twenty, June twenty fourth?
Yes.
All rules lead to the polling station. And for people who don't know, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch, it should be a household name. We're voting for Lawman Lynch, District forty one, all right? Thank you, caller. Caller is gone. All right, so now I'm telling you, so we have to push this, we have to push this, we have to push this. Let's go. Caller, live.
Hi, yes, good afternoon. That's a Sunday.
Good afternoon.
Lawman, I, I don't know if this question has been asked already, but in light of what's happening with the immigrant community, which I know is very, um, well represented in the Brooklyn area. Um, what, what, I know you put up, um, one information session, but are you planning to have any town halls? How are you getting information out to those people who may be worried that they are going to be picked up by ICE? Um, because no one has a sign on their forehead saying, I am legal, I am illegal. So, you know, innocent people are gonna get caught up in this as well.
Yes.
Or, or what advice would you give to the listeners who are listening in now?
Yeah, this is a very.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question. This is a very serious issue. Um, as you know, I've said probably at least three times since I've been here. I work in the education space and this week was a very intense week with information coming down the pipeline.
Right.
So I know that, um, a lot of our principals and educational administrators within the district, they are already meeting and coming up with strategies as to how we address this particular situation. Our schools are no longer a sanctuary.
Right.
Our churches are no longer a sanctuary. Our hospitals are no longer, um, sanctuaries. So we have to be extremely strategic in how we address the situation. What we can tell you though is that, um, like I said earlier, we did have our, our first, participate in our first forum yesterday, our first town hall yesterday, and that is going to be replicated throughout the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months. I can tell you for March one,
Right.
we're definitely going to be in Brownsville for a massive, um, community engagement. And at the top of that is immigration.
Right.
What do we do? How do we handle a situation if ICE shows up, right? So that's going to be, um, priority at this particular forum. We also are cognizant of the fact that individuals don't want to come out in public.
Right.
Because even though this particular community engagement is happening at a church hall, a church center, community center, again, it's not a sanctuary.
Right.
So our community residents may have second thoughts coming out in person. So we're also planning, um, a virtual event. As a matter of fact, this coming Sunday,
Mm-hmm.
February two,
Right.
it is an education and social development forum that is happening on Zoom. And again, the information is on my website, lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com. And I'm going to be sending it via social, I'm going to be posting it on my Instagram. You're going to get it in your WhatsApp messages everywhere. And I want you to log on this Sunday.
Lawman Lynch.
Lawman Lynch for Brooklyn dot com. And this Sunday at seven P M.
Yes.
Uh, it's really an education forum, but you know, we have to pivot.
Absolutely.
Realize that immigration is really a pressing issue right now. So even though we're going to be talking about education, uh, we've inserted this immigration piece because we find that it is so important. But most importantly, caller, most importantly, there are different types of activism.
Mm-hmm.
There are different types of activism. I am an activist who invite me to the boardroom, invite me to the office, and let us have a, let, let us eyeball each other.
Yeah, absolutely.
And let us figure out how we can intellectually come up with a solution to a particular problem. But then there are other activists who will go to the streets and be loud.
Yes.
And we're so quick to criticize that type of activism, but there's a space for it, you know?
Absolutely.
There's a place and a space for it.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I want? Really and truly, I want an immigration amnesty.
Immigration amnesty could, you know, because I remember back in the days, through Reagan, my mom got her, her papers through amnesty.
We need it. We need it. All this, all these resources, sending out ICE to, to round up people. All of these legal fees, whether it is the legal aid or different initiatives that we have at the state's level or the city council level or the federal level, it's ridiculous. Listen, I'm giving you, and this is really a recommendation to central administration.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe the incumbents that we have now can get above their laurels.
Yes.
And be a little bit more vocal, yeah, whatever. I'm tired of it. You know, what we need really is an immigration amnesty. It could be for a month, it could be for two months. We look, we listen, we don't judge. We listen, we don't judge. Come in, clean slate. You get what I'm saying? And I think we could, you know, think about different, you know, um, strategies. So even though we're going to be sensitizing people and we're going to be giving, providing legal services and opportunities for them, we also want the powers that be to consider. It's a plea, a plea from District forty one.
District forty one.
That's our first plea from District forty one to consider an immigration amnesty.
And don't forget people, June twenty fourth, don't forget this name, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch, Lawman Lynch. When you go to the polls, Lawman Lynch, make sure you vote, tell your brother, tell your sisters, tell your friends, call your friends, election morning, call your friends. Get up and vote. You know, today we're gonna be your brother's keeper. I'm gonna utilize my social media platform to do the same thing. You do the same thing, you do the same thing, because we're gonna put this brother where he's supposed to be, because he has so much to give.
Thank you.
But he needs the opportunity to do it. So we're sending it right there. But you know, I have a question for you, um, so you were talking about what you're doing for small businesses and so on, so how would you attract new business to your district? Cause earlier you said that, um, your district would, is one that doesn't have like a hospital and stuff and so on. You have hospitals close by, but how would you attract new businesses to District forty one?
You know, um, bees follow honey.
Mm-hmm.
Ants follow sugar, right? Am I, am I correct?
You're correct.
There's this misconception that there's an area in the district, Brownsville.
Mm-hmm.
There's this, this misconception that nothing good comes from certain areas. Uh, I'm from Jamaica and I'm from the hood.
Mm-hmm.
A place called, and I, I, you know, those in Woodford Park, the one to call Woodford Park. Woodford Park. It's in the greater Allman Town era, Allman Town.
I'm a country girl.
You're a country girl. And it's, it's really, it's really, you know, ghetto.
Yeah.
The hood, it, it's marginalized, it's inner city, it's vulnerable.
Yes.
And my mother invested so much in me going to school. And I believe that I am a perfect example.
Where did you go to school in Jamaica?
I went to the Salvation Army Basic, then I went to Alpha Infants, then Jesuit Primary, then Woolmills.
Ah.
Then I did my stint at U A and I U C before migrating, right?
Nice, nice, nice.
So the, it, it is, and I'm, I'm giving this story because I want individuals to understand that good can come from anywhere.
Anywhere.
Right? So how are we going to attract businesses to the, uh, to District forty one? There is so much opportunity in Brownsville, but we have to change the mindset of those who are within these spaces.
Right.
I spoke earlier about opportunities that can become income generators of over one million dollars, U S dollars in the first staging.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to say what it is now.
Right.
I'm still a politician.
Right.
So you're not going to reveal everything. There are still storefronts that are closed since COVID. We have to revitalize that. Why is it that all those chic, um, you know, boutique restaurants are only in Fort Greene? Why we can't have some over in East Flatbush and, 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 and Brownsville as well? So we're going to be going on a very aggressive, robust, um, campaign to revitalize the business, um, acumen and the business opportunities in District forty one to ensure that the, the, the district becomes lively again. And we're going to do it through the orange economy. And if you don't know what the orange economy is, just go to somebody called Google. Go to somebody called Google, the orange economy, and we spoke about being culturally responsive earlier.
Right.
The orange economy, you cannot lose if we tap into the orange economy for District forty one, to revitalize District forty one.
So we're talking about the revitalization of District forty one through the orange economy. Yes.
So I know I can't call in, so let me sit back down.
Absolute, absolutely.
Let me sit back down for my question. So, um, to kind of bounce off of what you said earlier about the, um, the areas, you know, why can't we have certain representations in certain areas? And I agree with you, um, but as my question for you is, the reason why certain areas are less appealing is because of the high crime rates in these areas. So my question to you would be, you know, to get someone who isn't, who really is kind of more afraid to, you know, enter certain areas and say, okay, well, I'll have some dinner at this restaurant because it's, even though it's in this area. What are you going to do? What kind of initiatives are you going to take, you know, maybe to work with, you know, the police department or something like that to get maybe, make people feel safer in these areas and make us want to kind of come to these areas?
Yeah.
First of all, first of all, K Flash, first of all, I don't know, I, I, I really want individuals to listen. I used a word earlier. The operative word was misconception.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Crime in certain areas like in Brownsville are actually down.
I did see that.
It's trending down.
I saw that yesterday, actually.
Right? I am a part of this meeting. I try to be, to be present at, at many of the precinct council meetings as possible. And, um, we find that the community, the residents are coming out a little bit more frequently now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, by the way, for those who are listening, it's every third Thursday, the meeting venue changes. The, um, seventy-third precinct council meeting, um, that covers predominantly Brownsville, that area. And then you have the sixty-seventh precinct council meeting as well. The partnership with the precincts and the community stakeholders, extremely important.
Right.
Right? And I believe that that is going well. Community policing is very important.
I believe strongly in that community policing.
Community policing is important, and I think that is helping to bring the, the, the crime, the crime rate down. But you know, that crime has a root cause. Crime and violence, it has a root cause. And the root causes are oftentimes tagged to social issues
Yep.
and economic issues. And mental, ah, and mental health issues. So if we can address the educational issues that we've been speaking about since eleven thirty this morning, if we can address the social issues that over time, it's not going to happen overnight, but over time, we will see where there'll be an alleviation of crime and violence, right?
So pretty much all of your initiatives tie into one.
Tie into one.
People at the center of everything we do, and people is an acronym. If we address each of those letters, P, public safety, E, education, O, optimization, P, public health, L, love, and E, entrepreneurship, which speaks to commerce, then we'll be addressing the whole individual.
I'm going to get a shirt with that.
So you see, thank you so much. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, people, we're talking to, um, our councilman after June twenty fourth. This is our councilman for District forty one. His name is Mister Lawman Lynch. And you see, like I told him before, I say, his mother was a visionary because she gave him the name, the name alone. That's why, you know, we have to be careful the name we give to our kids, you know? The name speaks to his future, what he was supposed to do, where he's supposed to be. Like I said to you before, when I saw Lawman, Lawman, I thought it was a name that he just, you know, because he wanted to run for council. I thought of the name he just used, because, but that's his real name. So he has a purpose. And this brother here was chosen by God. He has a purpose, he has a job to do. We just have to give him an opportunity to do it. And I believe in the power of prayer. I believe that God has put you here for a purpose. Your mother set it from then, and guess what? Them say one or dead, no dash it way.
Them say one or dead, no dash it way. You still a live, you no gone nowhere. Not because you're poorer, you must suffer. No make nobody keep you down in a the gutter. Remember you no gone, you still devout, as long as there is life.
I'm gonna play this one again for everyone in District forty one because this brother right here is coming to make a difference. Them say one or dead, no dash it way. Big up myself, Mister Richard Stevens, all right?
Them say one or dead, no dash it way. You still a live, you no gone nowhere. Not because you're poorer, you must suffer. No make nobody keep you down in a the gutter. Remember you no gone, you still devout, as long as there is life. Things can turn around. Get up on your feet and fight the struggles. Got to believe you can overcome your troubles. Nobody can shatter your dreams. Nobody, nobody can fail you. Inside yourself, try to find a hero. With a vision of a brighter tomorrow. Nobody can shatter your dreams. Nobody, nobody can stop you. Tell yourself you're gonna be the greatest. Like a warrior, sunny and fearless. Fearless and do more. Ride your ramps and everything and even open doors. It's your life and yours only. Sometimes get rocky and they leave you lonely. You are the author of your life story.
District forty one, Brooklyn.
No reborn failure, you've got work to do. Ain't nobody in the world can stop you. Nobody can shatter your dreams. Nobody, nobody can fail you. Inside yourself, try to find a hero. With a vision of a brighter tomorrow.
And that's we're talking about vision of a brighter tomorrow. Nobody can shatter your dream, them say one or dead, no dash it way. And that's what Mister Lawman Lynch is gonna be showing you after June twenty fourth. So much work to be done. And he's telling you that he has a job to do. He has plans for the district, right?
Yes, yes. You know, um, I want to quickly say this, that I'm, I'm a big believer in partnerships and collaboration.
Absolutely.
And as you played that song, wanna dead, no dash it way, you don't leave people behind.
No, you don't.
And there are individuals who have gone this road before. Um, they've been successful, may not have been successful. And one of the things that I did at the beginning of my decision to run
Mm-hmm.
was to reach out to individuals who ran before
Ah.
and may not have won. And. And I won't call names, but one of the things that, are you running again? Because if you're running again, I don't mind supporting you to win.
Right.
Because all I know is that the district deserves better.
Better.
I've also been in contact with other individuals who are in the race. Because it's not just me and the incumbent, there are others in the race. I think like five other young men, and I've been trying.
But for your district, it's just for you?
No, it's like five of us, six of us, right?
Well, like I say, Lawman Lynch.
No, I'm going somewhere with it.
Yeah.
And I, I reached out to the others and I'm like, hey, you know, um, I noticed you're in the race. Like, can we, what, what can we do together to make sure that we, we actually get the best representative?
Right.
Come June twenty four.
Right.
The night of June twenty four, we want to make sure that our district is going to move forward.
Absolutely.
And so I've been meeting so many individuals along the journey.
Mm-hmm.
You know, of, of getting to City Hall. And one name kept coming up. Like I've spoken to X person and I've spoken to Y person. And they're like, you need to talk to Dionne. You need to talk to Dionne. And I had it on my to-do list.
Mm-hmm.
To meet this King Dionne.
Dionne.
And, but I didn't have a number.
Ah.
But I was patiently waiting for the introduction. And Sherry, I kid you not, it was either yesterday or the day before. But it was, it's not longer than like seventy-two hours.
Right.
It could be like forty-eight hours ago or twenty-four hours ago. I got a follow on Instagram from.
You see Empress you tried to reach too?
Yes.
Ah, big up us all, King Dionne.
And I said, yo, this is my schedule. Like, this is what I'm gonna be doing. And he's like, you know what? I'll pass through this studio.
And I'm gonna ask.
And he's, he's, I don't want to put him on the spot. Because, you know, the truth is, he may not even be on, because there are other people in the race that he may know. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I don't want to put him on the spot, but the fact that he showed up to hear, and I want other, I give this story because I want people on, who are listening to at least reach out.
Yes.
Like, what can I do? Let me hear what you're about.
What can I do?
This election thing, this voting thing, young people, it is important.
And that's why I figured that a show like this would do for you. Because it doesn't make sense to do a fifteen-minute interview.
Right.
Because you can't see and you can't get to the root of the matter.
Right.
When you have a man sitting and say, this is my platform, this is what I'm running on, this is what I plan to do. It's in my manifesto, it's my, it's there. It's, 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 it's public knowledge. You not hide nothing. Everything is out in the open. But we have to big up King Dionne.
Yeah.
We have to big up King Dionne because, you know, people like you, I have to play a song for you. I have to play a song for people like you because I'm telling you, you know, it's so funny. When you reach out to people and, you know, not only did he reach, but he took the time out to come and support you. That is support.
Trust me.
But I'm telling you, District Forty One, you don't mind saying hi, do you? Yeah. So we'd like to invite you to come and say hi to, because you know, we wanna make sure it's on, 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 um. So just tell them who you are quickly.
Yes, yes. My name is Dionne Formler. I'm a community leader in Brooklyn. I ran for district leader, um, this past cycle. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to see my candidacy all the way through. My father passed away.
Oh.
Um, so with this District Forty One race, once I saw that, um, a few people announced their candidacy, I immediately started putting out feelers because as long as I said this is an comparative risk, it is beyond important that we get real representation back in District Forty One. So, um, I reached out, like, he messaged me almost immediately. And I wanted to be able to see, you know, how I can be of support and resource for all of the candidates like that. Because as long as I said they need to be collaboration, that way we can move forward, um, with the best person and, uh, in a manner that allows everyone to see that there's collaboration and there's unity within, um, just about the Forty First District amongst us as young black men.
Yes, that is so important. And you know, when you see one brother supporting another brother, that is huge.
Yeah.
That is huge. So I have to say thank you so much. And we have to make sure that this brother right here, you see the vision, you see what he has to do, you see what he has to offer. We have to make sure, man, that on June twenty fourth, when I look on my TV, this is what I want to see. I'm gonna be the biggest trailer leader right there. You have the support, you have the people, you have the personality. And not only that, you're a people person, don't it? You find, you find, it's about, it's easy to get along with. You feel, you feel his vibe, don't you? Feel the energy? I tell you, man, but this songwriter, me, King Dionne, I'm going to dedicate this song to you. Because sometimes you'll be surprised, this songwriter goes out to you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. If you give a little more than you take. And if you try to fix more than you break. If you're the kind who takes the time to help a stranger in the rain, there's a place for people like you. If you stand up for those down on their knees and lend a voice to those who cannot speak. If you shine a little light, give sight to the ones who've lost their way, there's a place for people like you. I've heard up there the streets are made of gold. And when you get there, there's a hand to hold. I believe when your days down here are through, there's a place up there for people like you.
There's a place up there for people like you, King Dionne. Can't say thanks enough. All right, all right. Thanks for the support as well. And like I say, um, June twenty fourth, primary election, District Forty One. Can you tell them again what areas, District Forty One?
District Forty One, East Bed-Stuy, Ocean Hill, Brownsville, Crown Heights, East Flatbush, Ramston Village.
All right. So people, there you have it, all right? And your candidate of choice, your candidate for that day has to be, must be King Lawman Lynch, all right? Councilman Lawman Lynch, he's gonna be your representative. All right. So quick, quick, quick. All right. No time is going by quickly, and I have so many other things to ask you, so people can get a feel of you. So do you think that Brooklyn District Forty One is getting its fair share of business development resources?
Absolutely not. And if you, if you speak to any politician, they're going to tell you they want more. Human nature, we want more, right? But opposed to just wanting more apart from that, I invite you. As a matter of fact, I'm challenging you.
Mm-hmm.
This is a challenge to you personally. Come to the district with me one day.
Yeah.
And let us drive just the, the border of the district, right? And then I want you to compare that to other districts.
District.
And then you're going to ask yourself, why? There's some, there's, there's a, there's a sharp difference between, um, the aesthetics.
Yes.
Of a downtown Brooklyn, a Brooklyn Heights, uh, a Fort Greene, and a Brownsville. There's a, there's a sharp difference. And clearly, we deserve more. We're humans too. We're people, right? Um, we've been trying to raise in district donations.
Mm-hmm.
Since November of last year. I'm pleased to announce that we did hit our target.
Oh, that's very good. Congratulations.
But while we were trying to raise the funds and we're asking for, you know, a donation of five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Come on, like, you know, you have to invest in your own future. It's not that people didn't want to, to donate.
Didn't have it.
They didn't have it. They did not have it. Why do I say this? When you look at District Forty One
Mm-hmm.
compared to the district around it, the districts, the multiple districts around it, socio-economically, we're at a disadvantage. We're at a disadvantage.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure the council member for Brooklyn Heights wouldn't have a problem accessing his seventy-five.
Yeah. So, 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 all right, so I'm curious then.
So there's, we are at a disadvantage.
All right. So how then would you, um, work with other council members and so, to get more resources out to the mayor's office?
So each city council representative are, they are allocated a certain amount of money.
Yeah.
Right? We know that. But then the city council representative, your elected official, can always advocate for more.
Oh.
And that is where you spoke about personality. Yeah. We spoke about advocacy. Yeah. All of that is important. But it's like having a business plan. What exactly are your plans for the district? It must make sense. And then I will be that one to go and advocate for the additional resources. Not just the minimum that we're allocated, but for more.
And you know, because you see, I'm kind of rushing the questions now because I'm trying to get as much out as possible. So what I want to find out, so how will you prioritize the allocation of the, um, resources you get for the neighborhood? How would you prioritize? How would you determine where you're gonna spend the money on? How would you determine where that money go?
Right back to our acronym, people at the center. So every individual enters representation of politics with a passion or will hope that they have a passion for something. My passion is education.
Education.
And we spoke about the Rapperoa model. My passion is also health.
Mm-hmm.
You know, addressing those health needs, mental health needs of those who are most vulnerable. And of course, number three, entrepreneurship, commerce.
All right. There we have it again. People, we're talking to Mr. Lawman Lynch. And time is just going by so quickly, but so much to talk about. Think we're gonna have to have a part two before the election, you know? Because we have to make sure we give them as much publicity as possible. We have to make sure it's in your face because people like to vote for what they can see. All right. Any ideas on how you can improve public transportation?
Public transportation.
That is kind of not as much as where you can.
Yeah.
At, at, at your district level, probably, you can't as much. It's, it's more the mayor and the, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not really, but you know, occasionally, because they are, you know, renovating certain, uh, train stations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, occasionally, there are free shuttle services, um, along the routes. So that's, that, that, that's good at this point in time. But there's, there's little, and, and let us, let us be clear.
Mm-hmm.
We can't do everything.
I know you can't.
Especially not in the first term.
Absolutely.
Right? So public transportation is, is not one of those issues that I believe that it has. Because we've done our listening tour and it did not come up as an issue of grave concern for residents.
So then, all right, then, so let me see if this is of great concern in the area. What's your most critical infrastructure needs in your community, apart from the hospital?
Our schools.
Schools.
I believe that, uh, we need better infrastructure in our school system. You know, we have some schools, you, you walk in the building, it just.
Really?
It's bad, yeah.
Wow.
E- even in terms of, um, or access to technology. A lot of work has been done over the past, I would say, three years or so. But so much more needs to be done in terms of the infrastructure. Also, when you look at the public housing, there are residents now who are complaining that the, the heat is bad.
Oh, my God.
Normally, publicly, you, you hear people talk about, oh, that project heats and whatnot. Nah.
No, my goodness.
The, the, the heat situation is.
All right. People, once again, we're talking to, and we're speaking this into existence right now, Councilman Lawman Lynch. On June twenty fourth, that's who we're, we're gonna have, all right? Quick thing for you again, do you support rezoning in your district? And if so, what kinds of safeguard would you put in place to ensure new development benefits existing residents?
Okay, so I know one of the biggest issues is gentrification.
I know.
Um, I, I'm a member of New York Communities for Change. And we support rent freeze one, but we also support equity in terms of access to affordable housing.
Rezoning.
And, but when it comes on to reason, it was, the rezoning happened recently.
Okay.
And the way in which the district is cut right now, I believe personally, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it?
Because it's, it's a mix. It, it can't, it, it cannot be said that, oh, it's only the Brownsville. In East Flatbush, I mean, East, East Bed-Stuy, Ocean Hill, we find, um, a very good mix of individuals, you know, skill sets, socioeconomic backgrounds, so on and so forth. How it is now, I believe it is, it is fine. I wouldn't, that's a, that, that's an issue that I wouldn't even, that's a boat I wouldn't rock.
And, and I'm going to put this question to both you and King Dionne because, you know, you guys are representatives. And, you know, we can only learn from both of you, all right? So what strategies would you employ to improve living conditions in public housing? And older residential buildings?
Well, you know, one of the first things that we, it's not so much what our city or what, um, or representatives can do for individuals, but what individuals can do for themselves. Yesterday, for example, I went to a, a tenants association meeting in one of the better developments. It's not public housing, it's privately owned. And it was packed, standing room only. When I go to some, you know,
Yeah.
tenants association meetings for the projects, it's, it's hardly anybody comes out. Like, we have to get to a place where we really want to see change in our buildings and go out and demand that change. So the first thing that we have to do is actually participate in the process.
Absolutely.
Go to the meetings, area concerns, and hold, um, our building managers to the fire. One of the biggest challenges that we have now though, Sherry, is that a lot of these buildings are being privatized.
Absolutely.
Right? That's a problem. It's a problem. Yes, um, we are, we're seeing renovations in some of the buildings, but evictions are.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow.
Right? So we have to participate in our tenants association meeting.
I'll answer your question for you, Mr. Dionne.
Yeah, I agree with Lawman. And also, I think NITIA, there's a serious need for more resources and manpower.
Yeah.
Um, there's such a backlog of so many different issues and all these different, um, housing developments that one, this can't be addressed because this is a lack of manpower. And then the people that are in these positions, but they're not being, uh, not a proper vetting system. And then once people get into this union, there's a hard way to try to get them out and, uh, replace them. So you have so many workers that just, they're, they're there, they're getting paid, there's not much reprimand or anything, any way to get them to do their job. So, and there's such a time hiring freezes and whatnot. So we finally find that, you constantly find that NITIA is lack of resources and a lack of manpower to even start to begin to address anything, to improve any type of life, of quality of life for any of the residents.
Wow.
Wow, that's not good.
That's something.
Wow. So, you know, um, time is almost against us. But like I said, we're talking to, um, Councilman Lawman Lynch. Um, they say that he's a candidate, but we're telling you right now that he is our councilman for District Forty One. Come June twenty fourth, we ask you to go to and vote. The primary election is gonna be June twenty fourth, and the only person you're supposed to vote for on that day is Mr. Lawman Lynch. All right, Lawman, all right, how do you plan to engage with the diverse communities within your district? Ensuring the needs of all groups that are met, um, including immigrants, people of colors, and young people? I know you've kind of addressed it already because you've talked about people at the center and everything else revolving around them. But because we want to reiterate so people can hear again what you plan to do come after the election.
Right. So the L stands for love, as we mentioned earlier. And a critical hallmark or a benchmark on the L would be our DEI and Belonging Initiatives within the, um, district that's, that's going to be taking place throughout our school system and also within our community development spaces. So as mentioned earlier, the, it's not a campaign that will only cater to those who are colored, like black people.
Yeah, not minorities.
The, the, the fact is, our district is very diverse. And we are going to be having an initiative, um, that will benefit everyone within our district, whether through entrepreneurship, whether through education, or through, um, the health sector.
All right. And I'm, I'm gonna have to go back to King, King, King Dionne because I realized that your mic was, your mic was down when I asked you this question before. When I asked you about what strategies you would employ to improve living conditions in public housing and older residential buildings? If you could just, um, just tell us again what you would have done.
Yeah, just, uh, it's a lack of resources for NITIA, a lack of resources and manpower. So more so, um, being able to address the backlog of all these different issues that affect the quality of life. Um, and then there's so many times, there's people that are protected by the union once they get into these positions, and it's hard to get them out. So you have, uh, just a rolling log of continual issues that pack, that, that pack up on each other. And there's nobody to address them.
Address them.
So the quality of life continuously just spirals and spirals down, you know?
All right. Thank you so much, King Dionne. I'm calling King Dionne because that's all, um, our councilman call you. Well, once again, once again, if you're just joining us, you're talking to Sherry S. here on J A Radio. And don't forget that J A Radio is a community-based organization, is a. And don't forget that J A I Radio is a community-based reservation, is a black-owned business. And we do like to support our small businesses, we support our black-owned business, minority-owned business. So support Mr. Isaac's if you can also sponsor, so you can sponsor my show too. Uh, we look forward to hearing it from you. And I'm sure we would like to bring back um Mr. Lawman Lynch before the election, just so we can remind people of what he plans to do. It's very important that you stay in the public eye, which you are already, but we would love to bring you back if you have the time. You don't have to come for the whole two hours. If you want to come, we're happy to have you, but we want.
The entire two hours, the entire two hours.
Entire two hours, because we want you to come and remind people close to the election, we want you to come and tell them again, why you must vote for me. We need for you to vote for them. But before we go, I have to ask you one more question that's near and due to me. How do you plan to prevent displacement and gent- gentrification while still encouraging economic growth in the development in the area?
So displacement again is because of the sky, the skyrocketing um prices um in rent, hence the rent freeze. I am part, I, I committed to NYCC and I'm not going to backtrack on that commitment that I'm supporting that campaign for a rent freeze um in New York.
So, so, so rent freeze, would it finally get a backlash from the landlords and so on?
I don't care.
Okay.
I care zero.
You're on the side of the renters?
I'm on the side of the renters.
Okay.
I'm on the side, if that's going to be my downfall, that's going to be my downfall.
Ah.
That's what I believe in and that's what I'm taking to the course.
All right, so before I give you the last word, I'm gonna ask um Lady Kay to come and give a last word for you. No, before you go to as well, um King Dion, just, just a, a last word too for um, for um, last word for um, of encouragement or whatever you wanna say in regards to Mr. Lawman Lynch. And then after that, we're gonna ask Lawman now to say whatever he wants to say to whoever is listening to him, wherever they listen to him from. So Kay, you have the floor as a lady.
Um, you know, I don't have much. I would just say that you are councilman of District Forty One, you got this. And we will be behind you every step of the way, pounding the pavement. Um, people go out and vote. I, I strongly believe that it's got in time and everything happens for a reason. I won't take too long, but I think I found a coincidence that last night I went for dinner and this woman came up to me, she goes, oh, I don't think I should sit here, but I really wanna sit next to you, you're, you're so beautiful, I wanna sit next to you. And they kept talking to me and talking to me and I'm not going to lie, it was a little bit annoying, but as I kept talking and entertaining her, just, you know, giving her the time, she was there with her family, a large group. And it turns out, I said, you know, where are you from, where do you live? And she goes, I live on Atlantic in Utica. And I said, really? You know, that's so funny because I'm from Crown Heights, you know, the border as well. And my friend is running for councilman of that area and she said, oh my God, but before I said all that, she kept saying, I need your number, I need your number, I need to see you more, like if I come out here in Long Island more and things like that. She kept asking me about living out here and how it was in Brooklyn and things like that. And I just find it that I ran into someone like that who was very, you know, a little impoverished and upset about the conditions of where she lives. And that we were talking about this today, so I just feel like coincidences happen for a reason. So got in time and that's more people who will be able to log on to what's going on with you and be able to, you know, go out and vote for you as well. And I just met them last night. So just keep going, um, keep putting out there, social media as well, you know, we're going to do something soon. And I will, you know, I will be coming out as well in numbers. I just had another question. Is there a limit, you know, a, a rule on who can come out and vote for you, you know? Or is it only District Forty One members? Is it the whole Brooklyn? Is it the other boroughs? How does that work? That's what I need to know to take away before I leave here today.
So only those who live in District Forty One can vote, right? Only those who live in District Forty One. However, anyone across America can donate to the campaign. But because we're a part of the matching funds program, if any of those donations from today to elections comes in from the five boroughs, that's going to be matched by the city times eight.
Oh, times eight?
Times eight.
Oh, so we need to, we need to get going, everybody just start donating right now.
Perfect, so basically, everyone go out and donate and everyone in District Forty One go out and vote.
All right, I had to give the mic to um.
And we need volunteers, so if you want to volunteer, just come and, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll use this brief moment to use it as a call and action, call to action.
Yes.
Um, if you're not registered to vote, go register to vote, go take a friend with you when you go register to vote. And make sure you get involved, civic engagement is an, is at an all-time low. Um, people are disengaged completely, cause from being under-engaged for so long, they're completely disengaged from civic engagement or politics, anything like that. And they're more than upset with the Democratic Party. Everyone is trying to wash their hands and we can see that from this past election. Um, it's very evident. Um, so people need to really hone in on what's going on in their communities and figure out, how do I, how do I involve myself in being able to make a change in some way? How do I in, in, add to the impact of the solution? Um, and I think people need to realize that they're always saying that, oh, these elections are rigged and um all the people that are up at the top, there's already decided. And that's because it's kinda true because you've let these people slip through, they didn't just up and get there. They started at local elections that so many times people just disregard and don't pay attention to.
Yeah.
So you need to come out and vote for people like Lawman. You need to win these elections right here, these are elections that matter. Cause one day, Lawman will be running for a state senator.
Absolutely.
He'll be running for a US senator, you'll be wondering, oh, why is this guy here, whatever? No, because he's done the work and he made his way up, the same way, like I said, but if you don't give him the chance now and you don't pay attention to these other young men in the race that are going off on a limb to be a catalyst of change, we're gonna be stuck with the same thing and it continuously be, I'm done with politics, I don't wanna, I, they don't do anything for me. Cause you're not paying attention and voting the right people in office.
Right, I hear that. Thank you so much, Mr. King. All right, so Mr. Lawman Lynch, want to say thank you for taking time to be here with me today. I truly appreciate it. Don't forget, you're talking to Sherri S on the Chit Chat Radio Show. And what we try to do here is to showcase our artists, we try to showcase our small business owners. We try to showcase people who are making a difference in your communities. And right now today, I am talking to you now, I've gotten a better insight into you as a person. Even though I don't live in District Forty One, I wish I could vote, but I'm gonna make sure that every day when I'm on the radio, I'm gonna bring it up. I'm gonna share the things on my, I have over five thousand on my two Facebook page. And you know, right now I have over twenty thousand people following me, I don't know why they're following me on Facebook. But I'm gonna make sure that we share and we're gonna ask everybody to go out and support Mr. Lawman Lynch. And I'm gonna ask Lawman now to give a final word to everybody who is listening to you, wherever they listen to you from.
You know, um, King Dion said it.
Yes.
Um, I could not have encaps- encapsulated this conversation um better. But I want individuals to recognize that this campaign is about empowering individuals and transforming communities. And we are really about putting people at the center of everything that we do. Voting is one of those franchises that we should not take lightly. Our ancestors, our forefathers, they fought so hard for us to be at this particular point, be at this juncture whereby which we can go and cast a ballot for those we want to represent us. I do not want us to sleep on that opportunity. And as we navigate the next couple of months, I want individuals, if you don't have the money to donate to the campaign, that is totally fine. You can offer your services.
Volunteer.
If you want to volunteer, if you want to help us with petitioning, um, you know, if you want to help with social media, anything at all, your skill set. If you believe that you can offer something to the campaign, please to reach out to us, right? Lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com, that's lawmanlynchforbrooklyn.com. Or on Instagram and TikTok, Lawman Lynch N Y.
And don't forget that we're still accepting your donations. Um, can't be too small. He says that li- as little as five dollars or as much as a thousand fifty cents or fifty dollars, one thousand fifty. All right, so once again, want to say thank you to everyone that tuned in today. Thank you to Mr. Lawman Lynch and Team Kay, much love, much love to you, King Dion, everybody who came in today, the photographer, Mr. Tony Isaac's. We say thank you as well. And on election night, I want to hear this song played because this was gonna happen in District Forty One.
Ladies and gentlemen, please to please join Sherri S D at J A I Radio, Chit Chat with Sherri S D. And she are, and she are, rock selection, I am the session, you free number one, show the bigger ball. Sherri S D. Artists, entrepreneurs, business people, anyone else doing great work in your community, please join in from eleven thirty AM until one thirty PM.
Sherri S D, you drive them crazy, morning dawn.
Each and every Sunday, Chit Chat with Sherri S D, live on Twitch TV, IG, Facebook, Mixcloud, and J A I Radio. Interested in watching the show, call Sherri at three four seven nine nine four six four six eight. Let's Chit Chat with Sherri S D.
In Sherri's true.
People, 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 what we say down on each other with Tuesday, from one, from six to eight PM, with what? From J A I Radio, you know what I think of, with the bossy, boom chat. With that thing called the boomer, you know, I know, I'm not so in like, rockstar, my job. I'm gonna come here and some of that cover, some of that calypso, we're gonna hear that some of everything comes out different vibes. Cause I think I'm new vibe, old vibe, every vibe, get your vibe, boom chat vibe, boom chat. Think I'm J A I Radio, each other with Tuesday, from six to eight PM, check it out, with the bossy, load. Talent, over, over. Trust and believe, you already know your boy DJ Eazy, one of the hosts of Talent Over Hype, big up Brown. Trust and believe, J A I Radio is the station you need to tune into, every Friday morning at nine AM.
J A I Radio.